Correspondence. I'll refer you that to you, Don, in just a moment. We did have a packet handed to me here at the meeting, which was a list of letters. I believe they're all in favor of the project. These were also attached to the website for your review ahead of time. And I also received a letter from Hanover Town Supervisor Todd Johnson. And I will read this into the record. Dear Members of the Chicago County Planning Board, my name is Todd Johnson. I am the Hanover Town Supervisor. First, I realize that like most board members, all of you are volunteers who do this difficult work because you care about Chicago County. So I thank you for all your hard work and service to the community. I also would like to thank you for taking the time to carefully review all of our submissions as you prepare to vote on an issue that will significantly affect the town of Hanover. As you know, only a small portion of the windmills for the proposed Ball Hill Wind Energy Project will be located in Hanover. However, the project could have a very positive economic impact for our town and its taxpayers. That money is badly needed. The southern portion of Hanover does not have the same potential for economic development as larger towns and communities do. In fact, as time passes, it gets harder and harder to identify sources and areas of growth. We are a rural community where the major source of economic activity is farming, much like our neighbors in Villanova. The Ball Hill Project presents an opportunity, if the people want it, to bring more than $1 million in annual revenue into the two towns, not to mention the construction jobs that could be created and the benefits that flow from that employment. As I understand it, an increase in the height of the towers means that the project can generate more electricity and potentially result in even larger royalty payments for the landowners. Additionally, the higher towers are likely to make the project more competitive and more likely to move forward. As my colleague from Villanova, Rich Ardello, has mentioned, the extra income from the project will put extra money into the pockets of some of our residents and will provide additional, much-needed tax revenue for the town of Hanover. This will certainly help us to provide essential services to our residents without increasing the cost to them. It might even result in some welcome tax relief. Both towns approved this project two years ago, as did the county planning board. We have already decided as communities to move forward with the wind farm. The question is whether we should permit RES to make an adjustment to the height of the towers and at the same time move their overhead transmission lines underground and remove a second substation. That substation and the noise it creates would be removed from the town of Hanover. The same is true for a significant portion of the overhead lines, which would be eliminated. I worry that a great deal of opposition to this proposal is against wind farms in general, but this issue was already decided by the towns and the county in 2016. Our town board has tried very hard to focus on the issue in front of us, that is, whether we should approve the changes to the project and the impacts, both positive and negative, that those changes will create. I do not know how our town board will ultimately vote, but I do know this: we appreciate very much the guidance that comes from the county planning board, and we will take very seriously any of your comments. But I think it is only right to allow the towns to make the decisions ourselves. We are the ones who live and work in these communities, and we are the ones who will directly feel the project's impacts. We also believe in home rule. Villanova and Hanover should get to decide their own destiny. We also have taken time to carefully review the submissions from RES. In fact, the process is still ongoing. We also are relying on an independent engineer to help us review the changes to the project. I promise you, we are considering the impacts of the project very carefully. We simply ask that you please give us the opportunity to try to help ourselves and not make the process more difficult. Thank you sincerely, Todd Johnson. Don, what other correspondence have we?
All the other correspondence primarily has come in the form of electronic correspondence, which has been uploaded to the Google Drive, which Michael has been keeping all the members of the planning board updated.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think Mr. Ardillo was making a statement too, who's the supervisor of Villanova.
Okay. Is he here?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Feel free.
Well, I think Hanover just worked pretty well. That is also how I feel. On behalf of the citizens of Villanova, I'd like to remember, think about something. We're on the far eastern side of this county. We're not in any of the tourist spots. We're now located around the Route 64 or 86, the thruway, Lake Erie, Chicago. We don't have the benefits from any of those. And pretty much we've been, feel like we've been pretty much forgotten on that side of the county. I'm not aware of any specific projects that the county or anyone else has come forward with to help benefit our town. And I may be wrong in that, I'm not aware of it. A long time we've been in existence by ourselves over there, and we haven't received a lot of help. In fairness, we haven't asked for it. Well, we're asking now. As to what, like Todd put it, if you don't feel like helping our community, at least don't hinder our ability to help ourselves. This opportunity does bring over $1 million to our communities. And like I said before, we don't even have a gas station, or a restaurant, or a store in our township. We don't have a town or a village. The people that live in our community pay 100% of the tax, carry 100% of the tax burden. We don't get any help from that. So this issue lately seems to be, has become, in my opinion, a little bit politicized. And I'm not a political person, sorry to say, but I have very little experience of this. I've only been doing this for a couple of years. But since I'm not a politician, when I see the political process in action, it kind of worries me that this is becoming, that being turned into something that it's not. Whether we agree with our governor and the way he wants to pursue green energy or not, this is the process which we've been given to work with them. Whether we think the R.G. should be repowered or not, I happen to think it should be. I said, but I don't see where that has any bearing on this project. If anyone thinks that Villanova not having or having a wind farm will have any impact on that, I believe you're mistaken there. So I guess while I look around, or I look to the other board members in our community, we talk about this a lot, obviously, as we have for the last couple of years. We already decided this issue once, and now, as Todd put it, we're only here to discuss the modifications. Look at the modification, which is basically the height of the towers. Look at what, are there any negative impacts associated with that change? You have all the information about setbacks and environmental concerns in front of you. Look at the facts. Keep the opinions and the political pressures and opinions out of this. Keep your opinions and political views out of our town. Let us control our own destinies and make our own decisions. I'm sure there are a group of very competent people up here who are going to seriously look at the issues. At least that's my hope, that's all we have, is hope that you will diligently, seriously look at the issues in front of you and take the political aspects out of this. Okay? I'm a public servant. I learned, when I haven't been to Chicago, but I learned right away that I have to take my political, or my personal opinions and put them to the side, look at the facts that are in front of me, and make my decisions on what's in the best interest of the community that I'm serving, and I hope all of you do. So, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, I will open it up to the privilege of the floor. However, those that attended the meeting the first time around, please, we heard from you, don't repeat what you said then. I would like to hear from those who could not attend the first meeting. I don't have a sign-up sheet that went around, just raise your hand and we'll call on you. Okay, who, okay, the gentleman in the blue shirt and the baton.
Can we set up a time limit for it?
Yeah, a three-minute time limit. Please state your name.
Can I have some table?
Yes.
And hand out copies of, or paper. These are copies from the comprehensive plan that, you know. For the record, my name is John Ortonvoll. I'm a resident of Bagel, New York. I've worked in Bagel here 35 years of my life. I grew up in Jamestown, lived in Dunkirk and Fredonia, and now live in Bagel. What I passed out to the board is copies from the comprehensive plan. Many of these folks at this table authored it, endorsed it, and wrote these papers. The debates have been great over the last several years, and my only point here is to draw attention to the county vision and goal. And it's stated several times in this plan with great thought, debate, and vision. I give credit to everyone who had a part in it. And it's not an easy job. I spent six years on the town of Dunkirk planning board, and we dealt with the wind process there, and the only factor there was private, individual wind towers of about 150 feet, totally different animal. So anyway, I just wish to point out to the board the visions and goals that were stated to maintain the rural landscape, heritage, and scenic views for the benefit of the agriculture, benefit of the environment, benefit of recreation in the county, and benefit of economy of the county. This county draws a lot of outside people, and it draws them to Villanova. It draws hunters in Buffalo area, hikers. Our parts full of good trails, Villanova's not far away, small, small park there. Anyway, just ask the board to follow the vision and plan that was laid out by the county and for the county. Thank you, Chairman Ortonvoll.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen in the green shirt, please stand up and state your name.
My name is John Robinson. I live 9200 Round Top Road, Forestville. This is the best place here. I say turbine 600 feet, no way. County board has only had 30 days, that's a ridiculous short time, for them to try to deal with stacks and stacks of data and information. They should be given additional extension time to deal with this. Maybe the town board's a little afraid to give them more time because maybe they're afraid what will be discovered, I don't know. But anyhow, here's what I've got to say about the infrasound or low-level sounds, as studied previously based on a GE 2.3-116 turbine, not a Vesta. Surely the manufacturer, Vesta, would have ample data on Vesta turbines and infrasound. Where are the figures for Vesta, especially with a 600-foot Vesta? This affects the health and the well-being of those living here in this community. And as you know, many of those signed on don't live here and/or may not have turbines close enough to worry about it. I do. The town and RES setbacks are already insufficient. I've read about many studies concerning health impacts, especially low-level infrasound, that say much greater setbacks than what we already have are needed, and with bigger turbines, even more so. Personally, I have at least four turbines that will be placed less than a half mile from my residence. We own 50 acres, and I'm 5,000 feet off the road, but these are still intruding on us. The previously ones that were planned are too big and too close. This is just totally obnoxious to us. There's been a lot of dissent among the community, not to mention my wife in tears when it was mentioned that they're going to go up to 600 feet now. Last week, a neighbor approached me at my house and said that he had already signed on previously, but he wished he hadn't. He was confessing that he wished he hadn't signed the papers, and he wanted to support opposing the turbines. These 600-foot turbines have never been used anywhere else in the U.S., except offshore, away from people. Maybe RES got a good deal on them, maybe they want to push them on us. I don't agree. Bigger is not always better, it's just more costly. This project was never cost-effective for the taxpayer. 70% of it is funded by the taxes that we pay, federal, state, and you have an average turbine runtime of about 30% effect, effectiveness. And where are the contracts for the electric to be produced? I was told by an employee in Arctrite that they've got the turbines up, they don't even have a contract for the electricity. What's the real economic impact? I don't think we've studied that. Anywhere close to see what's going to be, you may have at this point now.
Yeah, but we're kind of limiting everybody to three minutes.
Okay, but that's about it, my final comment. Just say no. Good people don't do this to their neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
I'll give you a couple copies.
Okay, anybody else like to speak? Ma'am?
My name is Patricia Greenstein, and my husband and I live in the town of Charlotte. We've been dealing with that project, and we partnered with people across the county for the same goal, to stop the wind turbines. Both these gentlemen both spoke to things that have concerned me. First of all, Mr. Ortonvoll spoke about the 2020. Since I've been coming to the legislative meetings, that was one of my prime concerns, is that so much time and money has been spent on the 2020 comprehensive as a way of saving our agricultural lands. There is all kinds of information about how many smaller farms. I've got a couple reports here called the Agricultural Opportunities Challenge, about growing food connections in the county. And it's a great report, and it talks all about the small farmers and how they contribute to the food chain. 23% of the small acreage in here is by smaller farms that are doing $1,000 a year, but it adds up to a big chunk. And we have a lot of, like, people starting up with, like, this lady over here who's got a farm where she grows beef. We grow our own chickens. We supply to several families. We're just a small-town operation. And something, and the second gentleman has both talked about some of the economic liabilities. I have not finished doing the economic liabilities for the Ball Hill or the Casa Dega project, but I want to share with you something from Ginger Schroeder of the Alley Cat Project. I've got four copies of a table that she did that actually talks about all the economic liabilities of the project. And I'm wondering if anybody ever did anything this extensively, because it's sort of like this: if I want to build a house in Chicago County, and I have a choice, I'm going to build a house out in the woods, and I have a choice between having a wind turbine that's going to cost me $25,000 to $30,000, or I'm going to do a hookup for NAG or Mohawk for $5,000 to my house. So am I going to go with the wind turbine that doesn't run all the time, that I can't rely on, for five times the amount of money, or am I going to purchase or have NRG or whoever come in and attach power to the property I'm building on for a fraction of the cost? I don't think that we're really looking, and I think the thing that Ginger Schroeder has done on this table here is she's pointed out where there's going to be losses in tourism. Losses to, one thing too, that we haven't talked about is grapes, the grape industry is booming here. We are the largest grape-growing region. Grapes rely on a microclimate. Turbines affect microclimates. You're looking at big losses. And basically Ginger took that, "I'm going to work on this," because basically, when I get done here, I'm going to continue to fight this in the town of Charlotte. Because economically, I don't really think, the planning, when I've done, I've never seen this, so I don't know if you guys have done the number crunching. I'm just, you know, I can crunch my own numbers, you know, when I'm doing business, I run the finances at my house. So, okay. All right.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Ortonvoll, members of the board, I'm Mark Lyons from RES. I simply want to introduce Dr. Christopher Olson, who is an accredited environmental health expert, who developed the report on setbacks that you requested at the last meeting. Dr. Olson is available to answer any questions you may have.
Would you have anything you'd like to say right up front, sir?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Chris Olson. As Mark said, RES contracted me to look at the increased tower height and setbacks and propose setbacks to RES that they pass on to the board. This is what I do for a living these days. I'm an environmental health consultant. I spend a lot of time around the Wind Energy Association, right from California over the East Coast, and a lot of time in the Midwest, looking at proper siting of projects. Certainly, as you look at the towers, they are getting taller now. One thing I would remind you, as you're looking at that, taller does not necessarily mean louder. And in this case, the Vesta's 136 are actually two decimals lower, quieter than the originally proposed 126 Vesta's turbines. So what's happening is, as turbines are getting bigger and the power output is better, what the manufacturers understand, whether it's Vesta's, GE, or the like, is they have to keep them as quiet or quieter in order to ensure that they can still place them in areas like your two towns and Indian County itself. The setbacks that are proposed are all based, you've got the report here, based on numerous scientific reports, studies, including groups that might itself have done, peer-reviewed published reports. When you look at theirs, we're recommending that you go two times the tower height, so regardless of how tall the tower is here. But in this case, you're looking at, you know, I believe RES is looking for up to 600 feet allowance from the county and the towns, so that would be 1,200 feet setback from a nonparticipating home. Looking at 1.1 times the tower height to any of the public roadways. When a tower collapses, it falls in on itself, it doesn't, then, they don't typically fall right over, they fall, kind of tremble in, in the unlikely event they do it. 1.1 times ensures that it certainly debris would not fall into the roadway. We're looking at one times a property line. Same thing, is to make sure that in unlikely event, towers to tip over, but you're not, then impacting the average property. The other thing the report goes through is how these setback distances protect them, the noise, the 50-decibel noise limit, which impact the turbines either, you know, the noise receptors, sorry, where people's homes are, the noise at those homes. In the most part, it's the same, rebound, the vast majority. It protects against ice throw, the unlikely event of a blade failure and the like, so. And there's certainly, there's three pages that I put in the end on infrasound, low-frequency noise, just very briefly. Many studies now are done on this issue. Recent study that I, there's a graph in there, I believe it's on page nine, is out of Germany, German state-sponsored study. It's not done by the wind industry, like, we measure 1,000 feet from turbines, infrasound, low-frequency noise with turbines on and off. We're simply nowhere near international guidelines for protection of health, low-frequency noise and infrasound. So yes, it's admitted, certainly well, low, below anything that would be of a health concern. In fact, by the time you're just over 1,000 feet, you're typically within background where you can see the wind itself. And I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that may have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, sir?
Yes, I'm Mark Twitchell from Fredonia. The main reason that the townships as well as the county are losing, well, one of the reasons we're losing income is because the turbines are noisy, and nobody wants to live next to noisy turbines. So the property values are going to be brought down, assessed values, tax revenue is going to decrease. I want to address in particular the letter that your board received on July 18th from Mr. Lyons, RES representative, which also contained a statement from Dr. Olson. Now, Mr. Lyons asserts now that the new, bigger turbines, which are not only taller but have a higher wing span, are quieter because of a change to the blade technology. My question, Mr. Lyons, is, has RES installed this new technology anywhere else in the United States? Has it shown to result fewer complaints from people that live nearby? Has the new technology been shown to reduce the amount of infrasound and low-frequency noise? So in addressing Dr. Olson's comments, first of all, the study that was included that you received, the Berger Study, was written by scientists who have a financial interest in the wind industry. And they collected a series of outdated, obsolete reports that don't reflect current knowledge on the science of wind turbine noise. Dr. Olson, who is not a healthcare professional, incorrectly states the appropriate measuring analysis. Instead of using the G-weighted scale, we should use a different scale. And that's because the G-weighted scale that he cites does not reveal the turbine frequencies as low as 0 to 2 Hz. The reason that that low frequency is important is because that's the frequency that the blade passes the tower. Now, that frequency has been shown to be, to cause ill effects in people, and the U.S. Navy proved that in the study of seasickness in the 1970s. This, Dr. Olson also creates a false influence between wind turbine and infrasound, and that is created by ocean waves or the wind. The turbines actually create a pulsation of infrasound at that very low frequency, 0 to 2 Hz. That frequency pulse does not occur anywhere in nature. This has been recognized as the wind turbine signature, and it's been recognized by acoustic researchers all around the world, who actually measured this wind turbine frequency signature in the homes of people who get sick. Because the acoustic energy is such of a low frequency, it has a long wavelength, which enables it to pass through the walls of homes and the tissues of people and animals. Dr. Olson correctly states that infrasound can be below the threshold of human hearing, but new scientific knowledge renders that irrelevant. The infrasonic pulses have been recently duplicated in laboratory studies, where sensitive individuals have developed the same symptoms reported by wind turbine neighbors. This was reported at the American Society of Acoustics in December 2017. This is why wind turbine noise and size are related to setback distances that affect rural property values. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name's Ben Westland. I live in Tom Pearsburg, the homeland in Villanova, where the wind farm will be going. And I just wanted to say that, you know, in my experience, living in that area for years, I haven't heard a lot of anti-wind stuff. I feel like this is a little bit of a squeaky wheel kind of thing, that people think that this project's already approved, and they don't really know that they need to come here and support it. When I talk around, I find a lot of support for it. The other thing that is making me laugh a little about this is the noise concern. I was at the Hanover Town meeting a week or two ago, and I went out to have a conversation out in the parking lot, and we couldn't really hear each other speak because the train was going by, which was nearly a mile away. Hundreds and hundreds of homes living closer to that and having that rumble by, you know, I just don't stand in the way of progress for sound that's being produced that no one can feel or hear.
Sir, state your name, please.
Yeah, Matt Aldenjerk, 9592 Round Top Road. I'm in favor of the wind turbines, obviously, but like Ben was just saying, there's many things for health concerns in this world. I mean, people are worried about noise from the turbines, people that aren't even from the town are affecting, you know, what's going to happen for us, the taxpayer base in the town, which I think is kind of crazy, but if people are worried about health, nobody's worried about the fluoride that goes in their food, the carcinogens. I mean, people are worried about windmill killing a bird, or the sound that they might hear, or they may see them off in the distance, and they may not like the view. But I am a farmer. I do about 800 acres up in the town of Villanova. I don't own that much. I do lease some, some of the piece of land that I do farm are going to be affected with the turbines going in. It's not going to hurt me as much as, you know, not getting this through as far as the tax revenue going, the base going down. I'd like to see the taxes go down for once in this state. They never go down. I don't feel challenged. I've really been working for the people across the board, you know, just everything goes up, 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 up. Anytime something comes along, it just gets shut down, thrown under the rug. As a farmer, I employ several people. I also have a trucking company, I employ a few people. I do bring about a million into this economy annually. I feel like my voice shouldn't be here, that's why I'm down here. I'm speaking for many other farmers that can't be here because they're working. It's hard for me to even break away. We would really like to see this go through. If people don't like it, you're free to vote with your feet and move, and I mean, this is our property. We own the land. I mean, we signed up, I'm sorry, but it is what it is.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Ma'am?
I was planning to speak, John Wright. I met John because I was doing oil and gas work in Chicago County. And at least I was approached, well, actually, they approached John to sign a wind farm lease. And I read it, have an experience with oil and gas. Oil and gas, I got all kinds of heat, all kinds of problems, all kinds of, it's banned in New York. It's banned, and it leaves something that's the size of a hot water tank, and our frac is not diagonal, frac, doesn't matter. And these windmills, the lease they gave us, it was 63 years. My grandkids are going to be old in 63 years. I did the research, I found pedestals the size of our house left in the fields because these companies went broke. They make a lot of promises. It's one thing when I wrote an oil and gas lease, I didn't make a promise I couldn't keep. And that's what I've seen here, is the leases, they wouldn't change a thing. I would make it to accommodate- I did the research, I found pedestals the size of our house left in the fields because these companies went broke. They make a lot of promises. It's one thing when I wrote an oil and gas lease, I didn't make a promise I couldn't keep. And that's what I've seen here, is the leases, they wouldn't change a thing. I would make it to accommodate landowner, to accommodate the person, this lease, they wouldn't change a thing, it was take it or leave it, go with your feet. John's actually was invited to the Arbor Day Farm because he's made this a life project to plant and grow things that we would have for our children and our grandchildren. And now they're going to see what looks like spikes, what looks like jacks, and you can't avoid it. And yeah, I pay taxes, I'm not going to leave, I'm going to leave that property for my kids. But have we sold them out? It's not just us. The lease is long, this is not an oil and gas well, 20, 25 years. This is forever. Just read the oil and gas, read the windmill lease, and see what the difference is. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Mike Gajewski. I live on Prospect Road in Forestville. I've lived there for 45 years, paid taxes there for 45 years. I dairy-farmed it for 30 years. When I got into farming in 1972, milk was $16 a hundred. When I got out in 2005, milk was $9 a hundred. You know, taxes aren't going to go down. This is Villanova, we have an opportunity here. There is, what we do have up there is wind and elevation, and we need to take advantage of it. And I can, I was at a meeting at a town board last week, and they're trying to figure out how they're going to fix their roads. They're trying to pick and choose which one they can and can't fix. This town needs this. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
I've got more of a personal stake in this. I have a little farm on Bartlett Hill Road, and it's got a runway on it my dad built back in 57. And now I'm retired, I've got enough money to finally relax, buy an airplane, and you guys just took the class to that. Thank you. Or we, these markets trying to anyway, but... I know, you said it's 2,200 feet from one end and 3,300 from the other?
It's over 300 from the one end.
Yeah, but there's, those things can sling ice, the small ones. I've heard 2,200 to 2,500 feet.
We're happy to talk about the taxes.
And I've also heard the bigger ones, they have no, they have no figures on it to begin with, so, you don't know. There's too many variables in this to go ahead with it. Even the dismantling of these things, you've allotted 28 grand, I wouldn't even buy the gas for the trucks to haul them away.
Thank you.
My name's Nate Palmer, I just got elected to the Board of Villanova last fall. So I've been playing catch-up on a lot of this stuff. Just out of curiosity, I took a trip over to Wyoming County. And if I could find people out about in the yard, I'd pull in and talk to them. I went down a list of questions, went through the same thing with a lot of people over there. There's an awful lot of people in Wyoming that don't have a big issue with this. Noise, infrasound, killing the birds. They're just going out about their common, everyday business, they don't even think about it. I think you're going to see these more and more, they're going to be higher and higher. And it's just going to be technology that's going to improve, that they want to hire. Just so I let you guys know.
Anybody else?
Only if everybody else had their chance.
Anybody else?
Only if everybody else had had their chance.
My name's Lucra Paul, and I grew up on Bell Hill, I live in Fredonia. We have farms, my brother.
Five generations.
129 acres. And I have some questions, but I don't, I have questions about, you're already getting the windmills, why do you have to make them higher? Why do we have, why does Villanova have to be the one, the first ones in the United States, besides the one in Maine? It's the only one. And my question is, if you're going to bury these lines, does vegetation grow over them? And can snowmobiles go over them? But when I heard they were going to be higher, I started researching and Googling about the ice slings, and it's scary. The larger the turbine, the longer your blades are going to be, and they can sling ice 2,500 feet. And my mom's going to have, on the farm, it's going to be, well, Mark told me 2,400 feet, but I don't know if that's right, but if it can sling 2,500 feet, my mom can go get the mail, and this, she could get hit with ice. And what about, yeah, hunters and snowmobilers, they bring in revenue. But when they're, like, doing, going around, could they get hit with ice too? And I just, I sent some emails, but, to some of you, but would you please research this more before you vote on it, because maybe it shouldn't go higher? And I, why the rush? Just, you know, take your time, you don't want to make a mistake with 600-foot turbines. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kami Crowell, and I, we own a couple properties in Forestville. My family has had a farm on 58 Bartlett Hill Road in the town of Villanova for five generations. I will one day take over that farm, and our children will one day have it, seven generations. And I just feel that our environment enters such a high price for the installation of these turbines, there is a sizable carbon footprint, which is important to know, especially considering the whole idea behind its construction is for clean power. It is important to know that it is not completely consequent free form of energy. And people, animals, and the earth itself, all feel the effects of these turbines. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak?
Okay, I'm not good at speaking, but, oh, I'm sorry. I'm Diana Irma, I live on Round Top Road in the town of Villanova. We only have six wind turbines within about a half-mile of our property. We are not signed on with the, you know, turbines. The closest one is southeast on the back of our property is 1,800 feet from our house, and 900 feet from our property line with an overlay radius extending 300 feet onto our property. This is with smaller turbines, so I'm not sure how this goes with the larger ones. And the other direction, across the road northwest, T-39, is 2,200 feet from the house and 1,200 feet from our property. Turbine T-2 is slightly beyond that, so we're very close to these turbines. We have serious concerns over the infrasound, the flicker effect, and loss of property values. Mr. Lyons has disputed the infrasound issue and property devalue issue, and said the company would pay for curtains for our windows. I don't understand why the town board has chosen in the past to believe Mr. Lyons and disregards the well-being of all town residents. Now, to add salt to the wound, the town seems to be on the verge of approving these monster 600-foot industrial turbines, which is not what was approved in all the many pages of studies which were done, all those many pages. Mr. Lyons states that new technology has been developed so we can have larger turbines. While I dispute this fact, new technology would permit smaller wind turbines to produce more electricity. I urge the county planning board to disapprove the request of these monster turbines, which do not belong among the residents. And I also would encourage you to postpone your vote, to do more studying. My understanding is that you haven't had time to go through everything. Thank you.
Anyone else? A few spoke ones, that's, that's fine. With your permission, just one more, do you want to speak, sir?
Yes. My name's Roy Harvey, I'm from Mayville. I just wanted to acknowledge or put out here the notion that there are two types of sound coming from wind turbines. The audible sound, which is what the RES talks about, is what Mr. Olson recommended in an earlier statement, was 45 dB-A. That's according to the World Health Organization, you probably all know, 35 dB-A is the outer limits that the World Health Organization recommends. However, there's another kind of sound that's not even registered, and the wind turbine companies would rather not discuss it. It's the infrasound. And infrasound is caused by the blade passing, by the blade passing the tower. Voomp, 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 as opposed to the other sound, which is less obnoxious. So what you're going to get is infrasound, and it's going to go considerably long distances. We've interviewed people in Wyoming County who've been suicidal because of that sound. And you can see many documents, if you go on the internet, take a look at just Doctors Punch and James, they've done considerable amounts of studies, and they testified here at the Article 10. However, when you go to the Article 10, these kinds of scientists get short shrift because the wind turbine companies have many more lawyers, and they just continually attack, so you don't even get a good appraisal from those experts, real experts, acoustical experts, acoustical engineers, and Mr. Olson is not one. He's not an acoustical engineer, and he's not an M.D. And I suggest that you don't go through with this thing, because it's going to be worse in infrasound and other sound, because it's very quiet at night, and that's when the infrasound really takes place, and that's where it has its negative effects. Thank you.
I've got one short thing to say. My name's Henry Gennettasch, I'm an owner in Forestville, downtown Forestville. And the, from what I understand, I'm not sure, the windmill's when they're not running, I don't think you get the rebates and pay if you're a pro windmill guy. So if they sit there and stand still, you don't get any money, only when they're running. The other thing is, don't be, don't be so short-sighted, you know, and think that this money's going to come in. You've got a million dollars coming into this county. If there's lawsuits, that money's going to get gobbled up by county lawyers, local lawyers. You guys will eat that million dollars up real quick if there's, you know, just a handful of lawsuits that start coming in, so be, be kind of sensitive to the money you think's coming in, because it might, you might have to defend yourself as a county. Thank you.
My name is Mike Lamano, I live at 9876 Prospect Road. This is my father-in-law. I don't know how many generations they'd owned property on the hill. I know at one time they had over 1,000 acres. He's had to slowly sell off property over the years until he's down to 200. The reason for that is because the taxes keep going up, and there is nothing coming in to take over for those taxes. I've been living there for, since 2003, we built a house. I can tell you that six months out of the year, I don't see hardly anybody in this room going over the top of that hill, I can guarantee it. With the wind blowing and the snow going across that hill, the only people that live up there, or the only people that are up there are the ones that live up there. Nobody else even goes up there. No one opens their windows, no one's looking across the field with the wind blowing. You know, we have to put things in perspective of, you know, who's going to be seeing this? Who's going to be hearing this? Who's paying the taxes? I've had people, I've heard them say, "Well, I bought three acres and I moved out three years ago." That's fine and dandy, I'm paying $8,000 a year. $8,000 a year since 2003, do the math. He pays over $10,000. There's another farmer in Villanova that's paying $34,000 a year. As these firms go out, who has to keep making up this difference? Who makes up the difference? I thought we came here for the reason of the height and the setback, not the reason of, I heard people say, "Because we're going to fight these towers." We're not here to fight the towers, we're here to see whether we should have the height or the setbacks. That's what we're here for. We're supposed to be getting these towers. And, you know, the problem is, where are we going to get all the people to start taking over for this tax base if this company moves and leaves? My taxes go up $1,000 at a time, 1,000. There's people in this room that only pay $1,000 a year in taxes. So I do understand the farmers and the locals. I do understand, I've worked three jobs my entire life because I wanted to have the land. I'm not complaining about my taxes. What I'm complaining about is, I hear about all these views, and my view's going to be, and there's going to be this, and there's that. Well, who's paying for these views? The farmers are that own the 140, 200, and 500 acres. They're paying for that.
My name is John Conway. And we're talking about all the views and bickering back and forth. This is all our views, it's just not your property, it's everybody's property. We all see this. All our taxes go up. But we live in a country for the reason, it's not to see skyscrapers. You want to live in the city, move to the city. How about you move out instead of telling us to move out? That's all I hear, is the people with the windmills, "Oh, you don't like it, you leave." No, I'm staying here. Why do you live here? You live here for the country, for the peace, for the quiet, for not having outsiders come in with their rich windmills. You've got rich outsiders coming in here just to drain our pilots. You're going to see this money disappear. The townships, they're going to have their Christmas wish lists, they'll buy a truck here, they'll buy this. Within three to five years, you watch your taxes start going back up again. Arcright already said that when we were talking. It's a drop in a bucket. If everybody contributed 200 bucks, you'd probably see, how many residents live in Villanova? 500, 600 residents? And there's only 80 landowners that are going to get this thing through their property? Or 29 turbines? I mean, it has to be, it has to be approved by everybody. It's just not 29 farmers out there.
But we are sensitive to your taxes.
I don't want to see everybody's taxes.
So speaking out of turn, please.
You know, everybody's taxes go up, but it's like, why do we have to all pay for? I mean, like, you know...
Okay, sir, thank you.
Just briefly, I'm the town attorney for Villanova, Don Mahoney. I'm going to limit my comment only to that question of municipal liability to lawsuits. I understand that there's no town, there's no county that has any liability regarding nuisance from a private company's project. So, I mean, you could check that with the county attorney's office, but I do not think there's a liability issue that would use up around the town.
Okay, Mr. Switzer?
Thank you, Chairman. It's good to see you all again. For those of you who don't know me, Kevin Reddick. They have the nice things or the slander about me, depending on how you feel. I represent the towns of Hanover and Villanova, and we greatly appreciate your opportunity to do this again, to take your time to look through this. Obviously, I think of the planning boards in the state who know about wind, I think this planning board probably is at the top of the list, maybe the one in Clinton County has, is up there in Wyoming County. But to my knowledge, this is the eighth, the ninth and 10th versions of laws that have come to you when you consider, a law in Charlotte, a law in Cherry Creek, a law in Arcright, amendments to each of those laws, two previous laws in Villanova, two previous laws in Hanover. You've all been through these, and you're familiar with the reams and reams of studies that have gone on, that the towns have had, and the towns have relied on independent experts, particularly Jim Pippen, who I think most of you have met over the years at Haley and Aldridge. And the towns don't rely upon the company's mittels, the company's mittels go to an independent engineer who is responsible to the community. And the communities take this very seriously. I'm very proud of the fact that I'm the only attorney in this state on behalf of municipality who's defeated a wind farm. I represented the town of Allegheny when they opposed after every power had changed, tried to change the application, they said no. And it's important to remember, the towns have not decided what they're going to do here. Rich Ardello has not voted, the board members have not voted. They're asking you to support their right to vote. They're asking you to say, "Let the towns have home rule." I did want to respond to some of the more incorrect items that were said, but really, not to disagree with them, but just to point out how we've dealt with them. One person said, "What do we do about these pedestals that are being left by bankrupt companies?" We have no worries about that because the money to decommission does not belong to the companies, it belongs to the towns. You don't rely on a town's, a company's net worth or a company's ability to do that. And that's because these projects are put together with groups of investors and groups of pension funds. I've heard a lot of railing at the Villanova public hearing about greedy corporations. It's not who the owners are of these going forward. You end up, you end up with organizations that put up bonds, the bonds are backed by bonding companies licensed by the state of New York, they have to have an A-Bus plus, A-Best plus 15 rating. If you talk to any of your county attorney people, they'll tell you, that's what they require for public improvement bonds on the streets. The money belongs to the town, the money is based on prevailing wage estimates by an independent engineer of what it would cost to remove. In terms of the pedestals, what the towns' laws both say is, it's up to the farmer or the landowner whether the pedestals get removed. Since not a single wind farm in this state has gone bankrupt, nobody's had to move on the decommissioning bonds. I don't know where these hundreds of abandoned pedestals are... In terms of the pedestals, what the towns' laws both say is, it's up to the farmer or the landlord whether the pedestals get removed. Since not a single wind farm in this state has gone bankrupt, nobody's had to move on the decommissioning bonds. I don't know where these hundreds of abandoned pedestals are that were referenced, but they're not in New York State. Any wind farm that had a decommissioning bond. So that's simply not an issue. In terms of the vegetation, it was asked, do they grow over? Absolutely. It's just, it's not even like a pipeline, it's like an electric line. So they absolutely grow over this, they absolutely support use by snowmobilers. In fact, the last time I spoke to someone up in Tuck Hill a few years ago, I said, "How's it going with some of this?" Yeah, the only problem happens if people keep taking, the hunters keep shooting at the towers.
Is he allowed only three minutes like everybody else or, I think he's gone over. In all due respect.
We will have specific questions.
This is a special selection.
I'm a horrible person, you're gonna give me more time than I do. But obviously, I'm here, I'm here on behalf of the two towns.
Keep it quiet, please.
Thank you. And I'm presenting what's in front of you on behalf of the two towns, I think it is fairly standard, my applicants answer your questions. Obviously, I want Mr. Lyons, Mr. Olson, the other people, mostly I wanna hear your questions and answer your questions and make sure that the submittals answered them. But in terms of the towns, the towns have looked at all of this stuff very seriously. In terms of the turbines not used elsewhere, I think you should ask Mr. Lyons where else are these vests used around the world and in the United States? Fair question, I think he's prepared to answer it if he hasn't already. In terms of the other thing about tourism, you don't have one study anywhere that's ever shown that wind turbines have harmed tourism. I, I'm not interested in stuff that's on the Internet when I represent things or I have to go to court. You have to have studies by professionals. Same thing with infrasound. You look for peer-reviewed studies.
Let's go on to specific questions of the board.
Okay, we're happy to answer the questions of the board on behalf of the towns.
Okay, we're gonna close, finish the floor at this point. We've gotta move on here, folks, sorry. We've, we've listened to people for an hour, so. One of the questions I posed at the last meeting dealt with the SECA segmentation. You did explain it to some extent, but can you explain to the audience what I was referring to and why this would not be considered SECA segmentation?
Right, and also employing my right as an old man to call on my younger associate to better explain it than I can if necessary. So segmentation, for those who don't understand, it is if you take a project and you don't take a look at all of its parts that are integral to the parts of that project. The case first got renowned within SECA when they were looking at an expansion of the Long Island Expressway. And they were only looking at part of the expansion in one particular area and not the fact that they were doing a lane through most of western New York County. And the Court of Appeals said, "Well, no, that's clearly the same project, you have to look at the same thing at once." What the regulations say is, what do you do when you have a project that's gone through SECA, SECA's been completed and it's reopened? And the SECA regulations dictate what the methodology is. The methodology is that you are limited to your environmental review to those changes in the project and the impact from the changes in the project. So for example, if you have a project that's been approved for a two-lane highway and you then say, "No, we're gonna build a three-lane highway." What's the increase in traffic that will occur? What's the increase in construction that will occur for building that extra lane? What's the increase in loss of land from the additional land? Those are the impacts, the SECA regulations dictate what you look at. And the question that's in front of a town board or the lead agency, Villanova-Villanova's the lead agency here. Hanover's looking at the same questions as part of their approval process. The question that's in front of those entities is, what are the impacts and what are the benefits of the changes? So you look at, you have a taller height, so you have greater shower, shadow flicker, you have greater visual impact. Is there greater noise? You demand a noise study, which has been put in front of you to show what the changes are in noise. Actually, the turbines are quieter at the top, they still meet all of the standards. What's the change in visual impact? You have a taller turbine, but you've removed a large power line. And anybody who will talk to a landscape architect will tell you that large lines in front of you as opposed to towers in the distance, they have ways of measuring the distance. And I think there's information in the package there. You removed the largest noise source in the project. The largest noise source in the project was not the tur, any particular turbine, it was the substation, one of the two substations in Hanover. And that has been removed. You underground the lines, that removes, decreases deforestation, it also decreases visual impact. You reduce the amount of impact to wetlands. So you look at those impacts. This is not segmentation because segmentation is if you have a distinct project and you break that distinct project into pieces. And that's not what's done here. One project's already been approved and you're required by the regulations only to look at what the impacts are of the changes.
Now, I wanna clarify exactly to everybody what's before us. It was kind of alluded to during the various conversations, but the charge of the county planning board is to review the referral, which is change the zoning as it pertains to the height requirements for the wind turbine. Now, they, basically they want to increase the height allowed to five-hundred-ninety-nine feet, which is a hundred and four feet higher than what the existing ceiling is, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, now, so the process, we review this, we review the referral for the zoning change. Now, keep in mind, this is a parallel track for two communities. So there'll be two separate votes, one for the town of Villanova, one for the town of Hanover. Correct? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Now.
That's my understanding of it because you have two referrals back there, correct?
Right, right. Now, once, whatever the planning board's decision is, whether it's approval, approval with conditions or disapproval, it goes back to the town boards to act on the change. Now, even if the planning board disapproves the referral, the town boards can still override that with a supermajority vote, which means they need, if they're a five-member board, they need four yes votes to override. So the towns still have it in their control to act on the referral regardless of the decision this board makes. Now, once the referral has been, once the zoning action has been taken, is there, it also requires a special use permit review again, correct?
No, so the special use permit modification is also was referred to.
That, what, that's in the same bundle?
That's in the same, on the front of each town.
Okay.
And so the special use permit modifications are basically taller towers, there's no change in the locations that I'm aware of, except that they're moved back further from the roads because of the larger setbacks. And there's no new turbines and there's an additional parcel in each town that's added on. And that's why the change in the overlay district to, for infrastructure, not for turbines. Did I miss anything that you've requested?
No.
So there's, the special, and of course the substation and the line are removed. So the special use permit modifications and the two local laws are what were referred to you by each town.
Here's my concern, I want everybody to understand personally where I'm coming from. I've had experience with wind projects because I live in the town of Ripley. We had the Westwood-Ripley project that came before the communities fifteen years ago, when they, two thousand and one, two thousand and two, when they first came through. I was town councilman when they came through. I was a property owner who, when Chautauqua Wind Power first approached us, I turned down their lease. When Babcock &amp; Brown approached us, I signed their lease. There was a lady back here referred to the old oil and gas leases, the first time through reminded me of them. I just did not trust the people, did not trust the leases. Babcock &amp; Brown came through, the offers to the property owners per wind turbine was almost three times the amount. I felt comfortable dealing with the people. And I own four-hundred-and-twenty acres in the town of Ripley, I signed the lease with Babcock &amp; Brown for the wind project. If financial conditions weren't such as they were in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, we would probably have a Westfield-Ripley wind project. Don't know for sure, but due to financial conditions, the company pulled out because of the economic downturn and the project ended. So for all practical purposes, I'm in favor of wind projects. That said, my concern with this issue is you have, a community develops their zoning parameters based on what they want to allow in their community for economic development and others. And that should be set in place prior to the developer coming in and so they can look at what's in place and decide if they wanna try to build there. My problem with this is it appears that the zoning changes are being made to accommodate the development. And that's what bothers me. You've got a special use permit that's been approved at the height that was approved two years ago in two thousand and sixteen. And now they wanna change it and it's, it's just, my concern is mere procedural at this, at this point.
Tell me what procedures you're concerned the towns did not go through. And then Mr. Ardello was here and so was the town attorney, maybe they can answer you.
I don't know how to put it other than it just feels wrong to see changes after the special use permit's been approved.
I'm.
I, I don't know how to say it, I don't know how else to say it. I know it's no.
Certainly illegitimate, perfectly legitimate, so what you're saying is, are the changes in conformity with the comprehensive plan based on the changes after the fact? That's one of the issues that's in front of the town boards for them to decide. I think Rich can certainly address that as how he feels about it, or the councilman can address how he feels about it. That's what the town board has to decide. But that's what you're basically asking, because projects change all the time. It's very common for projects of a large size to change all the time. These projects were first proposed in two thousand and six, the technology has changed greatly since then. You mentioned the one special use permit, they got to the one special use permit, but this is the fourth company that's owned this project and this company has actually moved it through and done the environmental impact study for the second time and pushed it forward. They're asking for that change, you can ask them why the changes. And I think a good question to ask them is, will there be another set of changes? But the boards are absolutely looking at the same question you are, Rich, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that's what you've asked for, but you basically asked is, are these changes in conformance with the comprehensive plan of the communities and with the county? The county comprehensive plan very clearly says that one of the goals is to preserve agriculture. There is absolutely no question that the long-term beneficiary of the local economy from a wind farm that was built is agricultural owners of the land. That's in every case throughout the state. In some cases, the money is such that the towns have literally eliminated taxes. In Arcrite's case, they've informed me they've chosen not to do that because they're concerned about the short-term concerns. Every other town in the state has actually significantly reduced their tax burden using wind farm money. That's part of the equation as well, as part of that. But the comprehensive plan of the county, the comprehensive plans of the town are not, if you will, violated by these changes. If they are, then I think you'll find that the town boards will vote no. The town boards are absolutely looking, I think, again, Rich, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but that to me is exactly what Rich was talking about, is exactly what Todd was talking about. So let us decide what's best for us in terms of our plans. Because they're looking at the question the same way you are. As, as to why companies come back, I urge you to ask Mr. Lyons that question as to why they come back and express your concerns to him and the same with any other members of the board. I have to tell you, as someone who's worked on a lot of large-scale projects, pretty common to come back for changes. I work now on a lot of solar projects, don't get the same level of concern because of the visual, but they still get a lot of concern. Very common to come back after the utilities and others have gone through and say, "Oh, we need to move these panels here and these panels here and you need to change site plans." Very, very typical. You look at all the changes that have gone on any industrial property in Jamestown over the years, very common to change. In American Brass, I think we did forty-five major renovations over the twenty-year period when it was really cooking and each time it would go to the city of Buffalo for a review. So projects certainly change over time. If you have a specific concern about the procedure, Mr. Mahoney and myself could certainly try to answer it. The board members are here who could try to address any concerns about plans. I think you've really identified the heart of the issue that the town boards are looking at. Does this fit in with what's best for our communities?
No.
And it's been answered by one person's opinion, at least.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
When we originally approved this, what was the height on the original approval that we did as a, as a county planning board? Four-twenty?
Four-twenty, yeah.
Four-twenty. Max of four-twenty. Now it's at four-ninety-nine currently, is it requesting to go to five-ninety-nine?
It's four-ninety-five currently, yeah.
Okay, so it's four-twenty, four-ninety-five, five-ninety-nine.
Questions from the board?
One, two parts to this, to this question. One, you're limiting your bed power lines, you're burying lines. Any issues with additional right-of-way, time delays in burying the line?
No. It's been engineered, complies fully with DMF, all NEC guidelines. There's no, there are no obstacles to us moving forward.
Farmlands that are currently being used, will they still be able to use under or over?
Yes, sir, the lines will be buried deep enough that they will compete.
Now, Villanova's zoning, if I remember, requires all lines to be buried, were practical or something?
Sure, were practical.
What was the, already the intent there, were most of the lines being buried already?
Yes, all the lines in, in the town of Villanova were planned to be undergrounded. They, they're the collection lines.
Okay.
That collect, connect each of the turbines and run that power then to what was the permitted substation, the collection substation. At that point, the permitted plan is to go overhead at a hundred-and-fifteen KB for close to six miles on eighty-foot poles. But we have come up with a plan to eliminate that collection substation and to simply continue the four underground circuits all the way north to I-90, where we would step up to two-hundred-thirty KB.
And how long will my road be on the surface? I live on that road, I live right there.
I'm assuming, what does the towns have in place to protect their roads? I mean, as far as damage to construction?
First of all, I don't see any connection between undergrounding these lines and road use.
You're gonna have to go under the road.
We're gonna directionally.
Bore, okay.
But I think it's a good question to ask though. The answer is in the road use agreement, it doesn't allow them to close any road, any of the town. And what it is, is it's a three-step thing. They come in with their engineer and the town's independent engineer and they go out and look at the roads and they see, "These are the changes that we need to make." Most of those changes actually require them to get permission from private landlords, like if they wanna do wide curves or things like that. The town doesn't own that area. They have to make the landowners happy. If they say, "We need to put a new culvert in," they need to put the new culvert in, the road gets improved. When the road, when the project is done, it doesn't get built back to the level before the improvements, it gets built back to the level after the improvements. So in other words, if you put in a new culvert and during the construction you damaged the culvert, you gotta put in a new culvert. And that's the way that the host agreement, the road agreement is working in most towns. I'm not aware of any town that doesn't do it that way. So the host community agreements are also backed by a bond that, so the improvements don't rely on the company doing them. The improvements are based on an independent engineer's, just like any other public improvement bond, and that, that you would go against. So the town doesn't, but the towns don't allow anybody's road to be closed so anything can access to your houses. No roads to be closed.
First off, I'm getting, am I getting off track of the referral at hand? Any other questions from any of the board?
I guess there was a question a couple of people talked about and I'm gonna just follow up on it, and that is, is this particular model that's now being proposed elsewhere in the United States, onshore, offshore, or other places in the world?
I'm not aware of any that are installed in the United States, but I know that there are eighty-seven that have been, eighty-seven turbines of this model that have been running since approximately January of seventeen. It only became available in December of twenty sixteen.
And maybe, maybe to add to Mark's saying is that, so vests, the new vests is one-thirty-six, it's the improvement on their one-twenty-six. And like any other machine, what happens, what the vests has to do is they have to build a test facility, this one happens to be in Denmark. They do extensive testing in terms of, you know, there's questions of how do we know they're lower? Or is, what is the blade technology being used? So as they're getting taller and as they're producing more energy, what happens is they do extensive, extensive testing, independent testing that's done by independent engineers for a very long period of time so that they can guarantee to the developers, when they say, I believe it's a hundred-and-five-point-five deciles is what they're guaranteeing out of the vestes to these guys. And when they do the sound.
And when they do the sound studies, it's that number that Vestas provides to the sound engineers to make sure that we're saying that we're going to stay at that permitted level in homes below. If they're not, both the state as well as the towns have the ability to come in and say, well, you're above the permitted level, and therefore you've got to either take the machines down, or you've got to de-rate them, or whatever. So it's in their best interest to make sure that the sound level they're guaranteeing is the sound level. In terms of the, where they are, the V-136 now is, I would say, one of the most common, newly looking for permitted machines now in the United States. We're great from California right into the East Coast. It is very common right now, and as Mark was saying, the ones that are up onshore are mostly in Europe right now. There are a couple being installed right now in Ontario, just north of Toronto, about two hours north of Toronto, there is a 100-turbine project up there that they're being installed currently as of today. So they are, they're a new machine, but again, this is reliable technology, it's been tested and proven, and that what we're going to see is, you know, quite a number of these machines are being ordered. And not just the Vestas 136, so GE, the other manufacturers, Siemens and that, they are getting taller, and the reason they're getting taller is, you know, better wind conditions are able to capture more of the energy, and that's why they're all trying to stay at the same noise level or lower, because if they don't, they're not going to be able to put them anywhere near people's homes to meet that sound requirement, and their competitors are going to be able to come in and take over that marketplace. So that's sort of the background behind extensive testing, through an ISO test, they have to do an IEC test actually, to make sure that they get the levels.
There you are.
I do have a question. You're talking about a different generator than the generator we were talking about previously?
No, sir. I think, and we talked about this at the last meeting.
That's right.
And just to clarify, think of this as a Prius, okay? A Prius has been around a long time, but this is the upgrade of the Prius. So this is the same generator, everything in the box in the nacelle is the same. The only thing is different is that the blades are longer and it's on a taller tower. But it's the same generator as the V-126. The important part is the 3.45 megawatts.
I asked this question before, I'll ask it again. Is it the same generator?
It is the same generator.
Thank you.
And just to follow up on what Chris said, people will not invest in this technology unless it's been certified. There are some very bright people in Denmark. The typical certification lab is DMVGL, and they do test it. They put it through rigorous testing, and you don't get your certification unless it passes all those tests.
Just for my own education, the sound, generator, blades, combination of both, what is...
It's a combination of both, but for the most part would be the modern towers, the ones for the last five, seven years, most of the sound, any of the sound that's emitted, you have from the gas, you have it from where the nacelle is, but most of the sound is coming from the actual, the blades spinning and passing the tower. So that is where the majority of that noise is coming from. But again...
Can I say one thing? He's a paid consultant from RES. He's here to help them sell a product.
Well, and I'm happy to, I'm happy to address that, so I certainly, so I certainly, well, no, you're asking, so I'm certainly, I'd like to talk to the board about my, I am being renumerated to be here, I'm a professional consultant, but I also have, and I hold a number of academic university professorships, and I teach actively at the University of Toronto, graduate-level courses, PhD students alike. I publish more peer-reviewed scientific papers in North Mac than anybody else in my research group than this. It's all above board, I've been certified by numerous state tribunals, numerous state hearings, county hearings in fact, as an expert, independent expert in providing, citing advice, and happy, and my CVs included within the board, certainly not hiding anything, I mean, CVs right there for the board as part of the package, and stand behind my reputation for doing that, so.
Okay, sure. Okay. Board members, please, we're past the privilege of the floor. Any other questions from the board?
Can you just explain the setbacks one more time from 499 to 599? Have you extended those from the road to, from homes? Please explain it just one more time.
Certainly, and so in the package, as part of the package that Vest provided to you, there's a letter from me in that package, and if you were to go, if you don't have it for you, I'm happy to walk through it anyway. Board members, do you prefer, by standard of consideration, certainly whatever the question for is, so certainly in that, so what you look at, and very typical for any town ordinance or town zoning law, is there's a combination of things. The first and foremost is the sound level, and that 50-decibel sound level that was proposed in the past, the SUP is based on, hasn't changed. So no matter what they're going to do with the height and the sound level, they still have to meet 50-decibels or less in the homes. In fact, they're 47-decibels or less. In terms of the actual height, very common if we start with the roads and the property boundaries, whether it's in New York or whether it's right across most jurisdictions, whether they have a county or a state level jurisdiction for roadways, property lines, typical is a 1.1 times the height, right to the tip of the tread line. The reason for that, and that's what we're being, that's what I looked at and proposed for this, so that regardless of the height, that it's a multiplier on that, so the tower was to collapse, you're getting into issues on ice road blade failure, that you're doing it on a multiple height. So in this case, they're requesting 599, so I'm saying 1.1 times that, give or take the 660 feet to the roadway. So that ensures that, you know, and, you know, again, if you look at it, most of the towers are set much further back. This is just the minimum, there's a couple of towers that are close by. For the property line, same thing, a one times the height to the neighbor, to neighboring property line, not to the home or anything, but a property line to make sure the tower would collapse behind the farmer's property that's at least the turbine. And then for the homes, it's a combination, if you can look at a multiple on height as well as a minimum setback. In the past, you get a thousand-foot setback, it's been very common across the US. Most companies are not setting, even with the shortage turbines, if you think about that, they're not setting that close, they're often, you know, beyond that. In this case, a two times the multiple in height. So if you look at 600 feet, that'd be 1,200 feet to the home, to the nearest home. Again, most of them are set much further back. The closest that I think we have here is 1,207 feet to a participating house. So when you look at those combinations, it's making sure that you've got multiples that are based on the science and the engineering behind ice road blade failure. Like, for example, you don't get the ice road blowing, I think this, people were saying 2,000 or a half mile turbines. It's not only a combination of, you know, if a blade starts to ice up, the machine shuts itself down. And it's not because of the goodness of their hearts for the, you know, homes next door, we already know they're going to be protected, it's because it's going to wreck the machine, it'll wreck the turbines. They come down automatically, you can have some ice road, there's no question. So when you look at the studies and some of the stuff that I put in here for you, there's a lot more, we didn't want to overwhelm the board with everything here. But when you look at it, it's a probability, so even if you were to, let's say, go 1,200 feet and you'd have an ice throw to that home, what are the odds that it's actually going to hit the house? And we're into like, you know, well less than somebody being struck with lightning goes to have issues. So we're looking at it from all of those aspects and angles, and so the ones that I've recommended the board and the towns can consider are that multiple on the height, and that's what we see very commonly, especially the sound is a bigger, but the sound one is a very critical one as well, and that hasn't changed.
Yes, Dan?
Would someone from the company just review with me your opinions of the real estate values and the surrounding properties, what your thoughts are?
The current values?
Current values and future values, the impact of these turbines on their real estate.
Well, I don't have any independent view about the real estate values in the area. Well, we did retain an expert, IREM, recognized expert in this area of real estate consulting. And they did a study in 2016 that included that the project would not have a negative impact on surrounding property values, and that was based on a review of the literature and their own expert views. We consulted with them again when we proposed this modification and asked them if a revision of their conclusions would be necessary. They reviewed primarily the visual impact assessment, and they said for this marginal difference, it would not change their conclusions from 2016.
I saw two independent estimates, one by Forbes that said property values would decrease between 12 and 30% outside value, outside maximum rate, it was 40%. One by Forbes and one by another study. That's significant.
Any other questions from the board? Go ahead.
Again, when we made this, when we proposed these modifications, we were focusing on any differences between the studies that we did for, are at the IS on our original permits, to see if anything had changed, and the answer was no.
So the four studies done in New York, there was a part study done in New York that showed no changes. I'm not aware of any study that shows that, that shows that it's looking at hatch pair of sale or after, when they're going to pass on sale.
Arcrite's not moving. I've talked to two bailers, things are stagnant up there, and the rest of the county's hot.
Okay.
Doug?
Yes?
I have two questions.
Okay, Dan?
Dan, the first, I have two questions. First question is for you. Back in 2000, well, when we originally received a application from Villanova for the original project, extensive environmental work was done based upon the 60 turbines. The modification in 2016 reduced it to 29 turbines, I believe. And with the additional 100 feet elevation requested at that time to 499, there was an SEIS done to look at that difference of the project change. We are currently having presented to the board a project that will now put some lines underground that weren't underground before.
Yes, sir.
And we are asking, you know, for an additional 100 feet. I do know that the board had provided to it an environmental assessment form along with copies of certain studies that had been updated to some degree.
Yes, sir.
There are also some aspects that seemed abbreviated, so, and I do know what the lead agency's rights are. But my question, because it's been raised to us as a board by outside members of the community, why did the lead agency, now representing the town, why did the lead agencies choose to not pursue requesting an SEIS for this additional 100 foot?
The lead agency hasn't made that decision yet. The lead agency absolutely has not made...
So you haven't made that decision?
Absolutely not. Among the things they're waiting for are your input. The county, I wasn't at the last meeting, Aaron was, I understood that the board asked, you asked the town to wait, and the town attorney's right here, you can infer what I'm saying, the town board has not made a decision. It has in front of it the same materials that you do. The town board has not made a decision whether to request an SEIS yet. Neither town board has voted in any way on this request. Both town boards have gone through the process.
It's going through the process.
And obviously Hanover cannot vote on anything until if either an EGDEC is issued by the lead agency or an EIS, SEIS is completed, until the SECA process is completed. So as of right now, that is an open question to the communities. And I think, I think, I don't want to speak for all the members of the board, but I think it's fair to say the board's considering this very carefully as to whether or not to require an SEIS.
Yeah, I'm pretty on it.
Yeah, so I think that that's part of the input that we're looking for from you. But the town board has not, neither town board has made any decision.
On that. Well, one of the reasons why I raise the questions, because some of the questions that are raised here today, whether it's by the public or things that the planning board is considering, might be better answered if they had that information in front of them. If you're going to request more extensive data collection on any one point, this board might be being asked to make the decision today without the benefit of having that report.
So if the, what the law says is that you turn into the county planning board the complete application of the materials that you have, which at this point is what they submitted to us, which is a request to change the two laws and the application change, and they filled out an environmental assessment form and provided all of that test. Jim Pippen then asked them for a whole bunch more information, and by the time it came for you, that additional information was in there. Jim has not made a recommendation yet to the board as to whether he thinks there needs to be an EIS or not. He's also looking at all the material that's coming into you. Should there be an SEIS, I would suspect it would come back, it has to at that point be another public area, I would suspect it would be another opportunity for the board to review if it wants to. I don't want to say that will happen, because I never speak for a town board about what it wants to do, but generally, this is the same timeframe that we are with projects where there's an SEIS, which is not that many. Before, every project that I've been in front of you on when, there clearly was going to be an environmental impact statement, we went to bother coming to you until after the environmental impact statement. But in Charlotte, for example, with the change of law, Casadega, where everything's going through Article 10, where there is no SECA, all those things came to you without an environmental impact statement.
Well, Casadega did not, because of Article 10.
Right, but the laws were passed, which is really what's at stake now, is a change in the laws, and it's, what you passed on in Casadega is actually the same thing you're being asked to pass on now. The town set the substantive requirements for Casadega, the state did not impose greater requirements. The state, which has its own health experts, by the way, they don't rely on the company companies, they may have rejected Mr. James and Dr. Punch, but they relied on the Department of Health experts when they made their decision that Casadega wins. And they certainly didn't agree with what the company wanted, as anybody who's read that decision has seen. And so this, what we've been following along is, we've been looking at Casadega and following with Casadega. So the setbacks, for example, match Casadega, for example, in terms of that information, and they match with the other eight laws that have been in front of you, a request. But Casadega is kind of interesting because it is Article 10, and there is no application in front of the town, it's just a question of the law, so the same information, we've got, yeah, what is the change, what are the impacts of the changes in the height? And the, Casadega is the only town where you now have a company that asks the state, please change a requirement, they asked them to change a requirement related to undergrounding the lines, the state said no. They said, we're going to stick with the town's numbers. So, yeah, I'm going on a long way, but what Casadega didn't have, what you have, is because this has already been through two environmental impact statements and this assessment form, you actually have far more information than those three towns did. Arcrite obviously had a lot of experience with it because of the EDF project, and the Arcrite part of Casadega is very minor part. Can you answer your questions here?
It does, it does. Then I just want to follow up with Mark on a comment that I believe I may have heard at the last planning board meeting, and that is... When, or, I mean, it seemed to me that at the last meeting you had made a comment during your presentation in regards to that.
As to whether we will own the project over the long term?
Right.
No, RES is a, fundamentally a construction company, it is, we have built more wind projects in the United States than any other company, and our mother company, if you will, is a 145-year-old UK family-owned construction company called Sir Robert Malgwick, Malgwick Group. They take a very long view, they have been in business a long time, they have many projects that they're proud of, and they've had a renewable energy affiliate in the United States since the late 1880s, 1980s or early 1990s. So we, we are probably the most experienced constructor of wind farms in the US, building for utilities and others. Our business model has always been to develop the project, construct it where we can, and then sell to some long-term, and Spencer mentioned pension funds and that type of thing. They typically will be the sorts of companies that will take the project after it's constructed. That's, that's our business model and that's our...
Okay, well, to start with, which I probably should have done some time ago, I would like a motion to remove this from the table.
So moved.
You have a second. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of moving action on this project from the table, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, do, is the board ready to make a motion? And we have three options, we can approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove. Those are the three options that are available to us by town law. Anybody have any further comments, questions on the board? Well, in taking the comments at hand, as being town... Hearing none? Well, in taking the comments at hand, as being town supervisor myself, I understand the desire to have the local community make the decision. I agree with that sentiment wholeheartedly. I also believe that there is intermunicipal and county-wide impact of this project, of the referral. Keep reminding ourselves, our charge at hand is to act on the zoning change to allow the potential increase in the height of the turbines. I believe the zoning law change is going to allow up to 599 with the actual height, 586?
568.
568. Okay. That said, tell you folks, this is a tough one for me. I see all sides of it. I understand all sides of it. Because I've been where you folks are. I will make a motion that we approve the project with conditions. And the one condition that I have is that a supplemental environmental impact statement be completed to further study the increase in height of the project. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion by the board?
Competing motions would be entered when? Are we going to make a motion or want to make a motion to decline? Point of order? Pardon me?
We have to vote on this motion first?
We have to vote on this motion first.
This motion needs to put on the table?
Right.
My comment would be, I appreciate what that is, and I think that's a good compromise. But at this point, I think we should just disapprove the whole thing and then possibly go to a second.
We have to go to a rule.
You just got to go to a vote.
We got to vote the motion on the table.
We can vote it, but we don't have to vote for it.
Right, right.
It'd be a roll call vote.
It'll be a roll call vote. Okay. If there's no further discussion?
Just to clarify, that would be my understanding of probably the board. I mean, if the motion on the table is properly seconded, we have to act on it before we can vote on a second motion.
Correct.
I mean, if we want a different motion, then if we could vote it down, then make a competing motion.
Make a second motion.
Second motion, correct.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call, please, Dan.
So the motion is, the motion is to-
Approve with conditions, and the condition being supplemental environmental impact statement be completed on the height change.
Is that being done now? Is anything being done about that, or is this just pushing the cart forward?
At this point, neither town has committed to doing that.
Who would pay for that?
Developer.
That's correct. You know, one real quick thing, one point in all this negotiating, I know I'm getting off track here, but why weren't these lines supposed to be buried to begin with from day one in this negotiation?
That's not even what we're-
No, I know.
We're only doing it in a very-
There's a motion. It's been seconded.
And, well, after the motion's seconded, there is an opportunity for board discussion.
For more discussion, yes. So we can-
That's what we're having right now, before we get to the vote.
You know, that environmental impact statement should include, you know, burying as much line as possible. That, to me, if we're having an open discussion as a board, that's very important to me, as a voting member, that a good majority of those lines, regardless if there's an increase in height, you know? That is a heck of a negotiating fact on the developer's point that I thought that they should have had in day one, not bringing it to the table now, saying we're going to this new height, and oh, by the way, we're going to bury more line. It's just a-
That piece unfortunately isn't in front of us now.
No, I know. But it's discussion.
Yes, and for sure.
Any further discussion?
Are they, so the towns haven't decided on this environmental, will this go to a supermajority or not? Can it go to a supermajority?
If it requires a supermajority, as I understand it, if the town were to choose not to do an S E I S, it would basically be that they would have to have four votes in the overall condition.
Right, correct.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you also wanted them to look at setbacks, right? You mentioned height, but you're also, you're talking about the three changes that they-
Yes, yeah, right. Yeah, the three items, base items that were mentioned at the last meeting was cumulative effect, the height, and the setbacks, yeah.
Right. And that's what the statute requires if you do an S E I S. You give all the rules of environmental impact statement apply. And you look at the impacts, cumulative impact, growth inducement, loss of irretrievable, loss of resource. All of those same questions were asked as it relates to the impacts. You had only said the height. I wanted to be clear about what's in front of you-
Right.
-being an S E I S on it. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Can I, just one more question?
Sure.
How does our vote affect the towns if we vote to approve with conditions? Or we vote to approve? How does that change the towns?
If you vote to approve, the municipality does not need a supermajority.
Okay.
Approve with conditions, if they, and the conditions, and they wish not to do the conditions, then they would need a supermajority.
But the town still have the right to refuse or not approve, or it's their call?
Sure, it's their call.
It's their call.
But a supermajority from the town-
Right, four out of five.
Four to five approves it. Correct.
If we approve this motion.
If we approve this.
If we approve this motion. And just to be clear, if-
Good point.
That's approved with conditions. We need a supermajority.
Right.
If, and I, if we were somewhere to make a motion to approve, they need three out of five.
Right, if we get to that point after the vote.
I understand, I understand. Okay.
I have a question for Dan.
Sure.
What's the likelihood of the boards, the town boards obtaining or approving the S E I S regardless of what we do?
I can't speak to them, and I really don't have any sense. I haven't spoken with either town supervisor. So I have absolutely no gauge for how the, either town board feels about potentially requiring an S E I S or not.
Do we know where the town boards stand now? Is that what?
Yeah, that's basically.
And we don't know where they're standing?
Yeah. And that's all right.
It really doesn't matter to our decision. We don't have to know what the town boards are thinking to make, base our decision. Because we're basing our decision on the intermunicipal, county-wide impacts of the project.
Okay.
And just one more, now, if I can amend my own motion. The other added item I would like to have included in the S E I S would be property values before and after.
And again, they have to look at all of the impacts they looked at before.
Okay.
Include property values, wildlife, birds, bats, everything. They just have to look at it as it relates to those improvements. So any of the impacts that the audience has mentioned, that you've mentioned, would have to be referenced in an S E I S if an S E I S is prepared. It's just as it relates to those approvals.
Right.
So the old Crago commercial that's in there, it's all of those things that have been mentioned by the audience, including infrasound anyways.
Okay, got it.
I still like having included in now motion though.
Ted, do you amend your second?
But the problem is if it's got 15 different things, if we only put three, or four, or five-
Yeah, we don't want to-
In there. I mean, I understand what, you know, you're saying, but my concern would be make sure these four are in there. Well, how about the other seven, or 11, or bats, or this, or, I mean, it's everything that's in it.
Keep in mind that when you do a supplemental environmental impact statement, it also means they open up a public hearing with, they got to have time for people to ask questions and get responses to those questions. So whatever questions gets raised during the S E I S process would be reviewed through the process.
Perhaps the way to phrase to massage a gentleman's concerns is to say that S E I S reviewing the same potential environmental issues as the original F D I S. And then cover them.
Okay.
I mean, you have representatives at the towns here.
Right.
They're hearing what you're saying, your concerns. But that way you would be, if you use that language, then there's nothing left out.
Okay.
We have an executive chair as a question. Our other board?
Yes.
For the audience's information, I am a member of the non-voting member. I was headed on the meeting, so that's why I'm not sitting at the table. But I have a question about the motion. Can anyone give us an estimate of the cost and time involved to do this additional study?
Anybody? I don't-
Dan, do you have a-
It would really be Mr. Lyons. Mr. Lyons has to pay for it. It's not the town's cost. The town has an independent engineer. That's who, by the way, they listed to as to whether or not they think they should do an S E I S or not, is Jim Pippen.
Do you have a sense of time case?
Timing is generally no less than 90 days to more than 180 for an S E I S, depending on, and the reason I say that is in this case, almost all the studies that you've mentioned on the approvals were included in the original application. That's one of the issues they look at. Under New York law, if an application includes, whether it's a D E I S or an S E I S, if an application includes every study that you would get, then there's no need for a D E I S. That's one of the things that the town board turns to its independent engineer, not its attorney, though, for advice on. So it depends on how many more studies they'd have to do to do that. But generally, the fastest I think you could do it is 90 days, the 180 would be the outside number.
So-
Supermajority vote justification for it? Because it has to come back to the county? Justifying why they overrode our decision?
Yes.
Yes. On the 239M, they're required to tell you what your decision was. And if they overrode, they basically say why they overrode and why they respectfully disagreed. In this case, I would think, given this one condition, what they would probably attach is the negative declaration.
Okay. Any further discussion by the board? Hearing none? A roll call vote, please.
Rebecca? Yes.
Dave Phil is absent?
No.
Bruno?
Yes.
Dick?
No.
Bernie?
Yes.
John?
No.
Jeff Gossett is absent? John?
No.
Ted? Yes. Doug?
Yes.
Just in regards to the law that's required here, we need a vote of a majority of not the people who are present, but a majority of the board. We have an 11-member board, which means that we would need at least six votes, either yes or no. At the moment, we have five and five. So-
The vote's not approved.
The vote is not.
Right.
Is it disapproved if we said six?
We needed six yes votes to approve the motion.
It fails to pass.
So it fails to pass. So, okay. Dan, you wanted to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to decline.
You mean to disapprove?
Disapprove.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Roll call vote, please.
Rebecca?
No.
Dave Phil is absent?
Yes.
Bruno?
Yes.
No.
I think you guys just- This is to disapprove.
This is to disapprove.
This motion is to disapprove.
You guys flip flops.
Change my vote.
You approve.
Oh.
No.
Does everybody understand the motion?
Can we start over?
Let me, let me start over.
This motion is to disapprove.
Approved.
Disapprove.
Approved.
Yeah.
Yes.
No.
Dave Phil is absent?
Yes.
Yes.
You're going to disapprove the recommendations to build the change of law.
That's what the motion is now.
And I want to make sure the gentleman at the end understands it because he changed his vote.
Yes.
Dick?
No.
John?
Yes.
Jeff Gossett is absent? John?
Yes.
Ted?
No.
Doug?
Am I to tiebreaker?
Well, yeah. It's four to five right now.
Yeah, six, four. Six yeses to disapprove and four noes. The motion passed.
Motion's carried.
Do we assume that that motion applied to both referrals? Eighth, but fourth, under the stress of doing the same thing over, I assume that the votes are going to be the same? And I don't know of any reason why you can't have one motion covering both referrals.
I would have ran that motion. I could have ruled both.
Okay. The amendment is to have this motion affect both referrals, one to each community. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Really appreciate the hard work you put into this.